Let us know when you're ready.
Yep.
Okay, we are set for... Yep. You'll pivot out?
Okay, I make a motion to call this meeting to order. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Go on, please.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lankiff.
Aye.
Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there any board member this evening who has anything to disclose or a conflict with any agenda item?
I do not.
Last year, I do not?
I do not.
I do not. Okay. First item up. The update on 75 Monroe.
So the update that I had wanted...
Did you ask for them, you know?
Yeah. So the only thing that I wanted to do was just be clear about what has happened in terms of boards approving documentation that was issued, just kind of... We've talked about some things in attorney-client, but just wanted to voice in public what has happened recently, where we are in the process and that kind of thing. So I'm actually asking you and you probably.
So the latest is the Planning and Zoning Board has approved the site plan for the project, and the HPP undertook their review of the LWRP and made a positive determination. And the last sort of action was taken by our village clerk because you were able to sign off on the forms as submitted.
Correct.
That they were...
Final certification.
Right.
As to what has been completed by the applicant.
Right, okay. And so then next steps would be that the applicant will be going back to the Historic Preservation Board to have an additional review or a certificate of appropriateness. So that's pretty much where we are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that... Does that take a while to get to that place, or is that a pretty immediate thing?
It's fairly straightforward. I think, Chris, you know, meetings are being scheduled, so I think things are moving along.
Soon as you can get there.
Soon as you can get there, exactly, so...
But you don't have to go, like, create a year's worth of plans to do this, to do this next step.
We submitted for the application for the CVA more than a year ago, and we've been modifying plans for the last year, and it's my understanding they're trying to schedule a meeting.
End of the month.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
So it's moving along. The process is moving along. Anything else to add in terms of what you were looking for for an update?
Nope.
I mean, I think it's just fairly straightforward at this point.
Just pointed it on the...
Okay, so... And then, Trustee Lankiff wanted to have an additional item under 75 Monroe, a reconsideration of the special use permit.
Sure. Thank you. Let me clarify with the clerk first. The resolution is also in the public packet, is it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. So just to speak to that briefly, that was provided to us by our attorney, and essentially it is an updated resolution which would essentially reaffirm most of the terms of the issued special use permits without a lot of substantive changes that I know. Essentially reaffirming based on the current plans.
Well, there were changes made to it. You made some additional changes to it that our attorney did not make.
No, I did not.
Okay.
There were only typos in the draft that's included in the packet, and that is my understanding of it. So as far as actions by our board, one question that we may have, and this might be a very short discussion, since I'm still waiting for answers to some questions from our attorney, and we were not able to coordinate before this meeting.
He sounds sick.
That's correct, yes. And so I just wanted to clarify what the status of the resolution is that is in the packet, and also dependent on this board, we may be able to consider some other changes to the special use permit, but I believe that would all be withheld for a future discussion.
What resolution are you talking about?
The resolution that is provided in the public packet is the one provided written by our attorney with only a couple of typos, if I'm correct.
And as I recall, our attorney said we may or may not do that, you know? In other words, there's already two resolutions in support of granting the special use permit. One was in 2009, and then again in 2012 by two prior boards. So, you know, in my mind, and the attorney also prior to giving six said, you know...
I don't represent you on this, but I think the dates are 2012 and 2019.
Oh, 2019, I'm sorry. That's so many days. Did you all hear that? 2012 and 2019. I'm sorry, you're right.
I believe it was the same.
You're right, I've been looking at other documents.
I believe it was the same permit, the 2012 permit was reissued in 2019.
Yes, same thing, so it was a... You know, so in terms of the exercise, I guess, or the procedure here to somehow do this again, I don't know. It's already been affirmed two other times, so, you know, I'm taking that into consideration as well. Any other thoughts, Willie?
You're taking into consideration...
Well, whether or not we even need to do this, in other words, it's already been approved two times by two prior boards, and in fact, there haven't been any significant changes other than the applicant has reduced the project by about 30% in mass and scale. And I don't see any... You know what I mean? In other words, I'm not seeing anything dramatic that would obviously be considered...
Obviously, yeah.
...in a public setting, what theoretically, what changes the board might want to see to the either one of those special use permits. For instance, building heights, I'm just, I'm throwing things out here, for instance, they would not want to necessarily consider that.
Well, we've had, you know, almost 13 years now of consideration of...
Fifteen.
What was it?
Fifteen.
Oh, sorry. I stand corrected, 15 years of, you know, working with our boards, other boards, you know, previous boards, to really get us to this point. We've also had this particular project that was in front of the Planning and Zoning Board. The site plan was approved, also had just recent approvals again by HPP. So I guess really my question then is, you know, just for discussion, is what would be the intention of doing this? And as far as the special use permit for the restaurant that is still under consideration by the PCBA, is that is not...
That was approved in the site plan.
I was trying to remember what the status was of that. The last, I understood from the chairperson that that part had not been... That was part Phase Three, I think he indicated it was Phase Three, and they were waiting for a report from Thailand regarding circus parking. I mean, I'm not the last under that board, so I'm just, I'm getting this just from watching the meeting. Jeff. I guess I wasn't clear on that part.
I mean, again, I don't represent you, but the planning board did approve full site plan, and I think those plans include the restaurant. I mean, the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, the reason I know about it is part of our thinking in the HPP-LWRP process was that the complete site plan has been approved. Now, I don't have specific knowledge of that, although, except for reading the minutes wherein that was approved, planning board.
My understanding, it's a matter of public record that the approval was made.
My understanding.
As well, so I'm in agreement with, you know, Jeff.
So there's nothing in front of the Planning and Zoning Board currently? The reason I'm having this conversation...
I wouldn't want to say definitively to that. I'm sorry, Lily did that, or...
Yeah, the reason I'm having this conversation is because there have been questions from the public, and I think that they are very interested in what we're being brought up today as to where we are currently, and so I'm just trying to clarify where each one of the boards are in the process and how close they are to resolution of the...
So I hope, I hope when we have just this initial update, just sort of where we were kind of in the pipeline, I was, I'm hoping that would be helpful, you know, to the public as well, everybody listening in tonight. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm very limited in my representation on this process, project. My understanding from reading the minutes, the planning board meeting, and I don't remember the date, but the applicant probably can tell me what date that was, they approved site plan subject to LWRP consistency. I mean, that's my understanding, and I couldn't be wrong, but that's what I've read in the minutes, and I read that, and I know that because I read that in preparation for the HPP's safety valve LWRP review. So that's what, that's my understanding.
That was mine as well, that, you know, we're moving along in the process, so, you know, the idea somehow that we would begin to reconsider this when other boards have already made determinations regarding, you know, in this, you know, let's say the restaurant, I don't know, and again, I guess I asked that question, really, what is the intention behind, you know, why would we be doing this? You know, because it's already moving ahead through the other boards? That means, I think it's just kind of an obvious question.
So I'd like to speak to that. So I reviewed it, and I can't see, if I, if I'm told a compelling reason for, if we don't change this, then we're going to get sued and we're going to lose, you know, and I still haven't heard that. If there was a compelling reason that we should absolutely change it because it's going to improve the entire project and everybody's on board with changing it, and everybody on all side, then sure, we could talk about it, but I don't want to change it and incur the legal fees of having to make those changes, the confusion around having to go through a whole process to make those changes when there's seemingly no benefit that has been articulated. So that's where I stand on it, publicly.
And I'm in agreement with that, I guess I already said that, so, yeah.
And then if I was just...
I would like to just go back to the point that our attorney has been ill, and I have not yet communicated with him on a couple of outstanding questions, so I would just like to run this by him and make sure the entire board is aware of that advice before proceeding.
Sure.
Sure, yeah, because we do have a trustee absent tonight, she's traveling, so, yes.
I have a public comment.
Public comment, sure. Any other comments from the board? Should we take some from the public then? Thank you.
Mr. Blaischer, you're allowed to speak.
Okay, thank you. I was hoping I could give you a little bit of an update to some of the history of this. First of all, what happened is multiple site layouts have been proposed for this, and if anyone remembers discussion from a few years ago, there is a discussion of a bait and switch, where original project was proposed and approved by the trustees, then a so-called supersized project was put before the planning board. The end result of that was lots of litigation, and the trustees effectively participated in litigation against the planning board because the plan did not comply with their original approval. So this new plan is really a pretty drastic change from what was before the trustees, and in particular, there's lots of things that are quite different, and I'm going to suggest you take a look at your April 15, 2014 meeting minutes, because the trustees in that review, they looked at everything, and they were so appalled by what had occurred in the changes that they revoked their prior approvals. Now, your special use permits expire after a year under current code, so all of them are expired. Now, I would strongly suggest to this board that you look at your April 15, 2014 minutes to see what some of the objections were. I'll give you an example. The newer plans propose removing all the trees in front of Sutherland High School, and that could be remedied, but that was one of the objections they had. The landscaping at the site could prevent a dense grove of trees that was in the original plan, but is not in the current plan, so there'd be full view of the buildings. So I think the question before you guys is, do you want the original site layout, or do you want the new site layout, keeping in mind that neither the planning board nor the HPP has jurisdiction to change the dimensions of the buildings, which they've done. This new plan has effectively moved large buildings to the rear of the site where it's directly in front of the athletic fields by Sutherland High School, and will substantially alter those view sheds. And likewise, some of the other changes I mentioned are in there, and what the trustees said back in 2014 was, no, we don't like these changes. Well, we want the original plan, which had better landscaping, had less impacts on view sheds, and was better for the public. So I think that's the question before you is, what version of the plans do you want? And I think a lot of this could be substantially improved from what's before the planning board. I'll leave it at that. I'd be happy to submit some of the minutes and some of the stuff to you if that helps.
Thank you so much, Justin. Yeah, we have our minutes archived, so we get that up, and we appreciate that. Were there any other... Okay. In your timing? Thank you.
Mr. Marshall, you're able to speak.
Hi, this is Dave Marshall, 67 South Main. Just wanted to clarify a few things. So the planning board has not approved site plan. Jeff, I believe you read minutes that were in the packet that were not approved based on the language that you might have read in those minutes. We delayed approving those minutes as a result of correcting the language. The planning board has proceeded forward and voted to approve moving the project forward to Stage Three, which is a review of engineering conditions, additional work by TY Lin, as well additional work by attorneys to ensure that the project meets all requirements, including things such as special use permits.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other comments?
Ben's only had this.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes.
We have a real problem. That is true. Then your verification is wrong.
You said at that meeting for me.
Hang on.
Which I don't believe, I mean, you're, I believe your attorneys checked the verification and the record. I looked at the record. I certainly the applicant can speak to, they were at the meeting, and whether or not site plan approval was granted, because that's what your verification says.
Yeah, it was based on that.
So I'm not saying you did anything wrong, I'm just saying we have a disconnect between the chair, what the chair of the board said and what your verification says.
This is what I think we should do. This is tabled right now. Let's chase this down, get the facts, and also, you know, Jeff, you made a point, we don't have a full board here too, you know?
Yes.
Let's, you know, get everybody together.
And I would like to hear from Mr. Spitzer as well.
Yeah, yeah, we need to have our attorney get a little, get a little better here, so I'd like, I just would like to table this, and let's move it on to the next agenda then. Okay, that's amenable to everybody.
Yeah, that's amenable to me.
Okay. So, all right, so, next up, schedule fire code inspections in the Village of Pittsburgh, and, you know, Steve, we just wanted you, you know, I know you had asked for this, and just, you know, maybe speak to the process of that and what that entails, you know, schedules, things like that.
May I ask some sort of rudimentary questions, first of all?
Yeah.
If I have anything on page, thank you. I have questions regarding how often, what is the state regulations around fire code inspections? Are they different for certain spaces like a restaurant as opposed to a non-gathering space? For instance, are they, I feel like one is maybe once a year and the other was once every three years, or?
Correct.
Assemblies are required every year. Any place that houses 50 or more, an assembly, and they are required every year. All your regular businesses are once every three years. So I take one-third of 224 businesses, I gave the very chart. I started in 2020 when I became the Fire Marshal here. I keep a record of about a third each year. I was due to do them and a myriad of other businesses, and it goes in the fall. I typically do it in the fall because in the summer, you know, rather busy, but, you know, I had another third that was due to be done October November this summer, this year, and they would have been in that third. I, like I said, I have a chart of every business.
Yeah, we got sent there.
I have to say, the chart is probably not totally correct, because we, things move in and out, so some of the names are changed, but the locations are still on my chart. We get dressed.
So go by the address, not the whole...
Yeah, I go by the address.
Okay. So just very quickly, so essentially it's a rolling schedule?
Correct.
Okay, because, you know, we have 940 households, you're doing residential work, you're also working with all the hundreds of businesses as well, and then if you could just help, give us the definition, what is an assembly? So would it be like a church, or?
A church.
Okay, just so people understand what that language means when we're talking about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I want to clear something up, because the social media on what transpired is way out of whack in regards that there was one violation at the establishment that would allow me to shut them down.
Okay.
Just by the Ansel fire system. The rest of the, and things that were there were health violations by the Health Department. They couldn't even shut them down for them. They are just violations, they would come in and cite them and then come back for re-inspections.
So where the village liability is concerned, if you were, our responsibility, you found one fire code violation.
Correct.
You found more than one violation. You found, so fire code violation was the one that...
The one that allowed it to...
Mike, may I finish, please? They gave the temporary closure of the business so they could correct the violations, so we did, we did our job, you know, we did our job, and we thank you for that, and the Health Department too came in and they did their job, regardless of any of the other circumstances that would have occurred that day.
No, I stay focused on what the village's responsibility is. Fire and safety. Right. So the fire, I think that I would like clarification going forward of what the schedule might look like, and maybe it could be shared with the board as far as the schedule for anticipating other... I'm focused on restaurants, because it seems to me when you put, you know, fire and cooking in a space with people gathering, that you have a much higher incidence of something going wrong, and so I would really like to know that we are, we are up, we are following all of our code very stringently going forward so that we don't have any.
I would like to just address that about restaurants, having worked in the business years ago for over 20 years, there are, the big, the big one is the health inspection every single year in a restaurant, every single year. So the fire suppression systems that he's talking about, when we use the word Ansel, that's actually a brand name of a fire suppression system, if there's a fire that breaks out in the kitchen, for example, over the stove, that is every three years, and it's certified, just the way, you know, like our fire extinguishers are and things like that, so it's all, that's why it's sort of that rotating schedule.
Yes, yeah. So I just want to make sure that we're, that we are covered as far as going forward and what, what's, because I did say, see that that inspection had not been done for quite a number of years at Brantillo's, I'm per se. So I don't want that to be happening in other businesses as well, in the village. I mean, we have old buildings, right, and some of them are also mixed use, and it could be catastrophic, so that's why.
So you became Fire Marshal a little under two years ago?
Yeah.
Right, so the previous Fire Marshal was through the town, I believe. Okay, okay. All right, so we'll be able to do that, yeah.
I'd like to riff on something that Elisa said, and that is to thank you for the work you did on a really difficult situation. I think you handled it professionally, responsibly, and with empathy, and I think that's a really hard thing to do, and thank you for that.
Yeah, Justin.
Yeah, I would just like to follow up on that as well, and just to make sure that we're being responsible for our responsibilities as board members here. I understand, as Trustee Lanier mentioned, that we're quite delinquent in terms of the inspection of the building that was closed for the fire code, we're a number of years behind the prescribed three-year rotation for that inspection. What I would like to see is not just a schedule going forward, but really a list of the different commercial properties in the village, the date of last inspection, and the status, just to make sure that those were cleared.
Yeah, I think that's what, what he was saying he's going to be providing.
Yeah, okay, provided and prepared.
Yeah, no, but we'll send it all out, yeah. We just print it out, and we'll send it out. You bet. Absolutely. Comes right out of the system. Well, great, thank you, thank you so much for that, that update about the code inspections. Let's see, next up, LWRP code updates, and I know we have a code workshop that we wanted to schedule this month, Dorothy, too, just before we get into this, Justin, so there were a couple of dates, and we would just like to pull the board.
Yes, and this is something we neglected to do last meeting. Looking at dates, we can look at, and then throw out October 20th to the board, or October 27th, we could do similar like we did tonight, start early.
Prior.
Prior to the meeting, yeah.
I'm really jammed up through November, through October. I would prefer that we push that into November.
Is there a date at the first week of November, then?
I could throw out November 3rd.
That would work for me.
I'd really rather do this sooner rather than later. I don't really want to wait another whole month to get some of these co-changes in there, first of all.
Okay, so this is, we last, when did we make the code, when did we validate the code? Was 20...
19?
19, 2020?
2019.
2019, I think it was.
2019. So this has been on the books for three years. I think we could wait another week to start discussing.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to have a full board there, I think that's helpful, you know, for everybody's input. I mean, I'm fine with all the dates, but...
I've heard no reason that is a compelling emergency. I really can't, can't, I'm barely awake right now.
And respectfully, your attendance at meetings has been quite spotty in the last several months, and I think that there are a lot of code issues that have really been pressing. I'd really like to try to get something in a little...
Okay, let's talk about that. The last meeting was scheduled at a time that I was not there, so I did not attend that meeting, okay? If you checked with me, I would have told you that I was busy at that time, scheduled in on a Tuesday night. I teach on a Tuesday night, so all you got to do is reach out to me. My attendance is my business. I have more than fulfilled my duties for the people of the village.
Okay, so...
November it is.
So, I mean, I'm fine with November, I don't think it's that too far off, you know? I mean, I don't, I don't know that it would make that much of a difference, and I do like the idea of having the full board available, you know, because we're doing all the code updates, so I think, I'm fine with that. And November 3rd is a Thursday?
Yes, that would be a Thursday if we're...
And October 27th was a Thursday, so...
Yeah, they're all Thursdays. They're all Thursdays, because we typically have them...
Usually something open. Yeah.
Is another week going to make a big difference, Justin, on three-year-old code? That you've given no reason for why there's such an emergency, or did you, or were you just trying to humiliate me? Seems, it seems a lot...
Well, let's just try to sort out the date, you know, and I know, maybe we can have this discussion offline?
I'm happy to have it right here.
I understand that, but we'd like to just move forward with this date right now. I'm thinking November 3rd's fine, I mean, to have the full board, I don't really see a problem with that.
Yeah, I'm sorry to say, because Renee is not here to say one way or the other.
Yeah, she's generally available on the Thursday. She had mentioned that to me, because we were talking about the dates, and she said...
So any Thursday, she had no conflict going forward.
So we should check with her?
Yeah, we'll double check, but, I mean, I had had a quick conversation with her, and she seems...
Why don't we put a couple of dates offline?
Yeah, let's pull the board, let's pull the board then offline, okay? So we can, we can move forward with that.
I'll be honest, I have, I have to check my calendar to home, unfortunately I don't have it with me to check them.
Well, then that makes sense, then, we'll pull the whole board.
Okay, I'll send that email out tomorrow morning?
Okay, great, yeah, that'd be great. Thanks so much for that.
We probably won't hear for a week or two, because Renee's traveling.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah, she wouldn't respond right away.
Yep.
Okay, just so...
Probably won't get solved for a little while.
Well, and Dorothy is going on vacation.
Yeah.
I'm very excited for that.
So do we want Kristen to handle it in your absence?
Yes, I have Kristen handle it tomorrow.
Okay, that'll happen. Okay, so next up, we have scheduled an executive session, so we are going to be taking a break, so I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss some human resource issues of employees. We have a second?
Yeah.
Trustee Lankiff. Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer. Motion passes.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, thank you so much. Okay, I make a motion, we leave executive session, is there a second?
A second.
Roll call please.
Yes, trustee Lightfoot.
Aye.
Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion that we reopen the meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Aye.
Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Go so quick when there's someone.
I know, boy, we're cruising now. Who's Dan? He had to leave, something with his kids.
Okay.
Good night, hope.
Well, thanks so much, yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, next up is a special permit application, it's nineteen State Street, Dorothea, we have the information?
The board was provided with a special permit application, the applicant was here but.
Yeah, she was.
She left because.
Understandably, yeah.
Really typically we just set the public hearing.
Yes.
So I would recommend October twenty seventh at seven o'clock.
Okay, I will make a motion that we set the public hearing to hear the application for a special permit for nineteen State Street for October twenty seventh at seven P M.
Quick motion, a second.
Yeah, that was good. Roll call please.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Aye.
Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, we have non-municipal permit applications this evening, the first one is for candlelight night.
Correct, so candlelight night is coming about again, so if the application is the same as the previous years, the plan, everything, exactly what they've done with closings and everything, so they're just getting their normal approval from the board.
Was there any feedback after the last one, you did your post-mortem after the event? Was there, was anything?
I will say there was no post-mortem, the committee has been jumbled.
Okay.
But actually Carrie McCready is coming back.
Oh, okay.
I just heard from her.
Is it just for candlelight, is it just to help?
I think it's just for candlelight.
Oh, that's nice.
I really have a meeting, they're having a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
To be honest, so I'm hoping I can get in on it to find out what's going on and where the plans are, so I, but my understanding, everything's the same.
Okay. But we received a lot of good feedback for having the tent outside and the music on the porch, people really, you know.
But maybe you could be inside this year and not freeze your.
Yeah.
Or get a little heat off of the porch or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice to have a little something on the porch.
It would be nice if we could, you know, the FFLs always start us off on the porch, obviously the board knows anybody who wants to perform.
Yeah, okay.
We don't pay, but we'll give them cookies, treats, treats.
Okay.
But yeah, so here we go.
Okay, well, I will make that motion then, how long will we for days, are we more than forty-five days?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're good. Okay, I will make a motion that we, the board approve the non-municipal use permit for candlelight night two thousand twenty-two, we don't have an exact date yet, is that right?
I don't know, it's December sixth.
Thank you, for December sixth, under the same conditions as previously approved. Good motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Aye.
Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up is the non-municipal use permit application for the Pull the Plug Regatta, what is the date for it this year?
November.
November, yeah.
November fifth.
Fifth, right, okay.
And I think we're okay on the forty-five, we might be close, I'd do a motion with the forty-five.
Okay, would you like to make that motion?
I'd want to, I'd like to make sure and we add this in, that they are completely responsible for picking up their trash.
I will inform.
Okay. So I will make the motion that we approve the non-municipal use permit for this year's Pittsburgh Crew for the Pull the Plug Regatta with the condition that they are responsible for their own trash and also that we waive the forty-five day application.
Requirement, yeah.
Requirement.
I'll second that.
Okay. Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, multi-year capital plans. Wow, and Dorothea, you had some information?
I provided information from the controllers office, trying to give the board all the information they need, like I did with the NITE Con stuff, because I feel it helps if we can get some authority to give us some weight on it. I also included the two plans that the DPW has currently working on the multi-year facet, so it gives us a start and I think you're looking to do more areas of covering for multi-year stuff.
Yes, yeah, I thank you very much, the document from the controller is a great one and looking forward to seeing the municipality adopt some of those processes. The two documents that you've also included from the DPW in terms of the street inventory and the vehicle inventory are very helpful. What I'd like to really see is kind of a gap bridged between those two documents that we have in place, those inventories, and the exact dollar amount that we'll need, you know, so basically in our discussion a couple of weeks ago about the ARPA funds, we said we've got this three hundred thousand dollar deficit in terms of deferred maintenance.
Correct.
I think that if done properly, we can see all of these multi-year capital plans as basically describing what that amount is in a proactive fashion.
Sure.
And so I think that we've got a little bit more finessing to do there, we've got to add a few areas and then we've got to take those two existing documents and, you know, make up the forecast, so I'm happy to help out with that too, if anybody wants to give me data points, I can, I can spend them in spreadsheets.
Why don't you chime in because we were talking about this.
We did talk about this because this chimes into something else, another class I went to NITE Con, I spent a lot of time at classes, that's the purpose, but I went specifically to budgeting because there was concerns with last year, I thought we did the budget process. And when talking to the state controllers and their recommendations for this coming year of what I would like to propose to the board, and I think it ties along with the multi-year planning, it ties along with the reserves, it ties along with use of ARPA and everything else and the multi-year planning, is a budget committee. Because in their point with having a budget committee, it's formed of department heads, the mayor and a trustee, everybody hammers out, goes through the stuff and then you bring it to the full board, so you kind of get through a lot of the process and what, you know, the goals, not that the full board can't make changes, but it, it makes that process less painful. Really, because it can, it can be very painful to go through, as you know, the multiple, multiple meetings, if we can hammer it out and make it easier for the board and have a solid team, because really what I would like to do is plan the budget out for three years.
Yeah, and then we really get to that and what we, and actually, you know, this last cycle, you were presented with that budget, especially, you know, switching around as quickly as we could, but now we really, I think, have the opportunity, you're jumping in too, we can work together as a team then and really get something sort of front and center and then really by the time it hits the board, you know, we're all kind of tweaking and tuning here, it's not like the big giant, you know.
The, you know, the board works on it and everybody's bringing it to you, you still have the ability to change anything or go over anything.
Yes, it is so helpful to know what the long-term plan is so that.
And that's something we've needed to roll in for a while and I think with rolling it all in, working on the multi-years plus putting the budget together for.
And the reserves, you know, really just really capturing all of this.
I really feel that we need a budget committee.
And it provides, I think, a better picture, it provides, and Justin, you're right, it's a much more detailed picture, you know.
Then the board, you know, this committee can meet, get hammered through stuff, get it out, by the time we get it to you, you know.
I certainly appreciate it because it can be very painful, it's that hour after hour after hour, go line by line.
And it shouldn't happen that way and that's what they were saying to you, it's not best practice, what you're describing, what Justin's describing are best practices.
Correct.
And frankly, streamlining that final budget process when it does come back to the board, because that front-end work has been done, we start to capture it, we start to build on it, three years out, five years out, we start to really.
You know where you're going, you know where you're going, you have a set pick.
Yeah.
The other thing is looking at dynamic budgeting, that's a whole new term, they really would like us to look at, a budgeting, also adopting the budget, not on a line-by-line basis, but this is where, you know, the transfers and everything, where the clerk, if it's like on the fourteen-ten, anything under fourteen-ten, I'm able to transfer within each other, once the board gives me that approval and you adopt it on that level, it saves on the mean budget transfers.
Oh, it just makes so much sense when you first told me that.
And these are recommendations from the control, and I'd be happy to share the information in that budgeting class, because that was really.
That'd be great, thanks.
That was really exciting for me because it really said, okay, we are kind of on the right path last year, now let's really make it a formal process, so if the board constitutes the budget committee, we can go ahead and do it that way, in that way it can be the mayor and another trustee.
So let's do it, y'all in, okay? I think it's great, I really do.
So what are, what are the, how is the committee going to be constituted, who's going to be on it?
Well, first, first Dorothea asked, we have a vacation.
Yeah.
So, no, I would say as they recommended, department heads, so that would be me and Zach, I would bring Brooklyn in for training purposes.
We need to be part of that.
Yes, and it's good for him to have that eye on what we're doing, because every eye can get helps, the mayor and a trustee.
And you volunteered, so Tag, you're it.
I'm happy to do it, thank you.
And then what we'll do is we'll, at our next board meeting, you know, we'll just bring it back to the board so we all know, you know, this is something that we're proposing, this is something we want to move forward so everybody's in the loop.
I think this is a solid solution, it was tying into exactly where I told the mayor and what we've been saying all along, right from budget time, we need to have this process.
Sounds good.
Okay.
It seems like the.
You want to finish this?
Just one, one small point on this, so it seems like the areas where we have larger gaps, we've got the vehicles, we've got streets, we have something on vehicles, something on streets, we need village hall and DPW.
Yeah, we need the buildings.
And we're, we're actually putting all that together, so we're all, we're all really tracking on this.
And if they gave me something in our progress to Zach, I should have brought it in, something with equipment as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and Danielle actually has helped to pull all that together too.
Yeah, and I know they're working and updating them for this coming budget year.
Yeah, 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 so Lily, oh, you finished, I'm sorry.
I am.
Okay, yeah, Lily, did you?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm, as usual, jumping ahead, jumping to member items and I'm only saying this because we have two residents here who have brought something to our attention to the building sector and I would like to ask the board how they wish to proceed, we did receive information from our attorney, I apologize, I meant to do this before Jeff left, he, I think he had some advice for the board as to going forward regarding the lack of, I don't know what to call it, I use this term, the lack of enforcement of our code regarding the dumpsters behind fifty, at fifty State Street, so I'd like to know, it's not on our agenda and I thought it would be and I just noticed it just now that it wasn't there.
I didn't know what.
I should have put it, I should have.
Yeah, I didn't receive.
No, we didn't receive anything.
I didn't, I didn't, I should have said something.
Do you want to do this as a member item?
Sure, sure, I'd like to, because I'd like to discuss it and see how the board would like to move forward with the, Jeff had sent us an email regarding what he thought might be a path forward and I thought we were going to discuss it this, this evening and it just went right out of my head, everything else was.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, so.
So the next thing was, okay, so, so we kind of have an action form here on the multi-year, I think that's good.
We did receive.
I'm excited about this.
We received a comment.
Okay.
Okay, Peggy Caribera, she said, please don't forget to include the ability of the public to observe and be involved as appropriate and that is always, the budget meetings are always open to public.
Always open, okay, all right, an update on the NICE dot upgrade and resurfacing of streets, Renee was going to, you know, isn't here, but she, you know, was going to do that, so we just got a, a NICE dot update, which we're going to be posting, they're going to be starting the milling and paving on all the mains, on the streets, so down south, South Main, North Main, they're going to be coming down Monroe, but the good news is this, it's been so torn up because they've had a labor shortage and that's originally, I'll just, I'll speak to the four corners for a minute, it's so torn up there and the original discussion that we had had with them, the pre-construction meetings going way back last year, was that they wouldn't do everything at once, they would, you know, pick.
Right.
Right, and they're so short-staffed and now they're on a very tight timeline because winter's coming, all of this, so it's NICE dot, they made this decision and here we are, so they're moving as fast as they can on that. Another component of that is where you see the Phoenix Building, where they have sort of taken, you know, taken that.
Yes.
That was, what is it called, it's not eminent domain, but it was, you know, where the state, state paid, you know, the owner of the Phoenix Building a certain amount of money to go in to get a little bit more land because of the new signal, traffic signal that's going to be placed there, it's quite a bit further back because the width of the sidewalk and the ramping.
Okay.
Okay, to bring it into ADA compliance, where you see, yeah, so we have to maybe figure out when to put our Christmas tree in the menorah.
I'm for Christmas.
That, to be continued on that, you know, and I, we, I was out there this morning with them saying, we have a tree in a menorah, so anyway, we're, they're aware, but they have their plans, however, the new signal will not be available possibly till spring because of supply chain shortages, so the old signal will remain, everything will be put in place to get the new signal, you know, and the crossing buttons and all of that put in, things will be sealed and capped off through the winter, so that's what you're seeing are the bases, not going to be the most beautiful thing, but maybe we can decorate it at Christmas.
The sidewalk be walk.
Oh, yeah, everything will be placed.
So it's just a matter of the equipment being.
Yeah, yeah, because this is a fly chain thing, so all, all four corners will be put back properly.
Okay.
Probably done, the monuments, you know, the markers, the geolocators will be put back and everything will be done, it's just those signals, so, and that's going to go out on a post as well, so the public understands that there's a little more to come, they will have everything done, they have factored in the PGA Open.
Okay.
And everything is scheduled to be done two weeks prior to the open, I know, I know, we, we have found our routed circles from them, okay, so there's that. The milling and paving, though, just getting back, and this is actually good news, is that they made the decision to do it as a, with a two night crews, not just one, they're doubling it only overnight and it'll, it's going to go a lot more quickly because it's a, you know, it's a big paving, paving job and restriping, so we're revisiting, you know, the striping plan that was put in place through our actual transportation plan, we're making sure, we fought again like heck to get that left-hand turn lane shortened out front of Village Hall.
Oh, yeah.
They denied us again, so I might be out there at night with black spray paint going over it, you know, but anyway, they are really trying to move forward and they recognize that, you know, winter's coming and they have to really wrap some things up, so that's kind of where it's at.
And the sidewalks, like in front of the Chase Bank, in that area where there's just basically a pit with a piece of plywood over it.
Right.
And not even lit at night, it should be like flashing beams or something.
They, we have, we have asked them for all of it.
And so they are.
They're everything will be completed. I think, yes, they are really.
Hey, I hope we don't lose that tree.
I know, I know. We told to ask them about the tree. If we lose the tree, what can they replace it?
Yeah, because all the roots are exposed.
I know, I know. There's a lot, a lot of moving parts with that.
Yes, okay.
But you know, the the truth of the matter is, this is a project that comes through kind of once every 50 years, maybe. I mean, it's it's really kind of a big deal. You know, I know you guys know this, but I try to bear that in mind as I, you know, snap pencils in the conversations. So anyway, that's that's, you know, sort of the.
My.
The quick update, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
On that, okay, so treasurers report.
Okay. First off is the bill pay. There any questions?
I do not have any questions or concerns.
We're good.
Okay. Can I have approval?
Sure.
Or would I make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill pay as presented.
A second.
Roque.
Trustee like here.
Aye.
Trustee like.
Aye.
Mayor Puma.
Aye.
Okay, next is the annual update document. And just so the board knows, this has been filed with state controllers. We are all set. Just wanted to bring this to the board's attention, so you have it. It's still in draft. I should be getting the finalized version. I just want to point out two numbers to the board. In the Village General Fund, we had a growth in our unassigned fund balance of $266,164.
Wow.
Great.
That is great news. And that will tie one of the conversations I'm going to have when we have our committee meeting as to moving some of that into reserves. I will then go to sewer. I really just want to focus on good news.
There's going on a lot of bad news there.
No, there's not.
It's actually, it's pretty good.
And of course, that page is going to hide itself, but it was about $119,000 in growth, I believe, in the sewer. And that's when you probably saw it.
I think on the right page.
Yes. You know, you do try to plan to.
Is this the one right here, sewer?
Yep.
Okay, and then was it the 116?
No, that's not it. No, it's no, no, that's a different one. But it was about $119,000. So there was a growth even in the sewer fund, which is great. Which again, will be something we look at because as we look at the reserves and how we're doing. So all good news with the annual updates. Are there any questions? Can we get to it?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
I do not. We're good.
I am glad it's filed and we're done.
Yeah, that was a biggie. Thank you.
All right, so next is Bernie Donigan. Contract, this is for one year. We can bring it back to the board. This is our financial, not the bond council, this is our financial advisors. We'll be looking to use them as we look at the back entrance project. I hope to have the bid specs to the board by the second meeting in October, so we can put it out to bid. I think we reviewed this.
That's right, gave us the timeline for that.
Yep, we're hoping to have bids coming in December, keep the project open through March, April, give them till spring to complete. So we can hopefully get the best bid pricing, given everything that's going on. And I'm hoping it comes within pricing that we can afford to do the grant. So I'm going to need them, so I'm going to ask the board to approve this.
I just want to clarify what's in the packet here, because I think I've got after, immediately after the financial report, we've got from VPD.
Yep.
That's all I have is an addendum to letter of services, bid 12022.
Right, it's a continuation of the current.
Nothing's changed in the contract.
Nothing's changed.
So all we're approving really is the addendum.
Yep, to keep using them.
Of this, okay, so we're really just.
Your continuing.
The the contract has not changed. There's just an addendum from the SEC.
Yep.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
So if the board can authorize me to sign that.
Sure.
A motion?
I will make a motion to allow our clerk to sign the addendum to VPD as included on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Roque, trustee like it.
Aye.
Trustee like here.
Aye.
Mayor Puma.
Aye.
Okay. Quick note for the board. I try to give these things to you as they come in. We received our funding for the year. As little as it is, we'll take it. It's the $9,319. That hasn't changed, and I want to say what?
It's usually about $10,000.
Yes, 10, 15 years. I know there's a big fight to try to get that adjusted, so we get more.
There is.
But it's still what it is. Okay, let's see here. And I had one other item, which is your paperwork. I did finally speak to this local government, certified local government unit in our rep. As we anticipated, we did not file our report in 2020 and 2021. There's no problem. She gave me the reports. Take my time, get them in, no loss of anything, we're good to go. So I'll get those in and get back.
And then the next report is due.
In the spring?
Yeah, springtime.
Spring of 2022.
Yeah.
And it didn't look too difficult to get completed, so we'll get that in. So that'll all be resolved. I'm not quite sure what happened there, but we'll get that contract. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
And also, I'll be on vacation for the next two weeks. Don't call me. I'll call you.
Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes.
Can we? We can approve the August 11th?
Let me scroll down. Any, any, yeah, oh, that's right, we can, so.
We can approve July 25th?
We can't do that one. No, we can do August 11th. So let's, do we start with the 11th?
August 11th.
Any, any comments on this?
I only noticed one typo on this. My name was misspelled in the middle of the member item paragraph.
Oh, yeah.
And I certainly don't blame you. I misfilled it. I named wrong.
Oh, I see it.
Just just mostly for searchability.
Yeah, no, I'll fix that. I am so sorry.
Okay, any other amendments to these minutes? Make a motion to approve the minutes with the amended amendment. Is there a second?
A second.
Roque. Trustee like here.
Aye.
Trustee like it.
Aye.
Mayor Puma.
Aye.
Motion passes, and we can't approve this one.
Yeah, so we'll, okay, it is what it is.
I'll send you a couple of, I I had a couple of changes on the 25th and 29th. I'll send them to you.
Okay.
Okay, so that's done. Okay, member items.
Okay, we had trustee Stetzer had said someone was going to represent around the Justin Road and Southern intersection.
That would be me.
There we go.
Yeah, and it's really kind of a work in progress because we're really reaching out again. I mean, this has really been ongoing with this intersection, with the kids crossing and traffic, and it's really difficult. So, you know, the aggressive driving behaviors. And it was interesting, I had an opportunity to speak with Mike Piro about this. And he said, actually, the students have been safer drivers. It's the parents actually to pick up the kids. They're trying to cut in line and, you know, all of that. So we're revisiting this again with NICE dot to see if maybe they can stagger the lights changing. So there's like a delayed green, giving people more time, you know, that kind of thing. And in fact, Renee said, you know, when she gets back, we'll circle back together on this. This has just been ongoing. And then the other thing that we talked about that may be a little more problematic, but still could be solvable, is, you know, we have a crossing guard on the Monroe and Southern. And we'd like to get one also on the Jeff side as well. I would like to even get a school speed limit, you know, slow speed limit posted there. There has to be a certain, there has to be a crossing guard for NICE dot to even consider it. And I'm I'm not sure, it it may be because it is a senior high school that they may not consider the reduction of the speed. There was something else that that triggered on it, but we're circling back on that. I would like to have a crossing guard there. I I think it's a good idea. I mean, that is so heavily traveled. All the kids are Courtney, you know.
Yes, and it's a shared expense with the school district, is that?
Yeah, yeah, we're all, we're all in on this, you know, it's sort of the same thing with the crossing guard that we get. It's, you know, I I think, you know, this is a community effort, and the school recognizes it too, so. So anyway, so we're we're stepping up again, and we're trying to to make it happen, you know, so. That's that's the update there. And I don't really have any other member items at this point. I mean, I already told you, you know, we're going to do the posting about the paving and things like that, so. Yes, next.
Yes, was, I don't, I'm assuming that everyone received the email from our attorney regarding a path, a possible path forward. From what I understand, and I think this is public, I don't think there's anything that's not supposed to be stated. And that is that our attorney has discovered through reading the code that we cannot indeed separate out the contract with the refuse company. It is a village-wide contract, and they cannot separate out individual accounts to remove, to remove them. In other words, they can't say, well, 50 State Street, you have not been in compliance, therefore, we're calling, we're revoking your.
Well, it's not the contract, it's the permit.
It's the permit, yeah. And so the suggestion is that the board, that this board consider action that can be taken as a board rather than taking it to court. I think that's what he said.
He was saying, so I'm hearing it for the board, I think, wasn't it?
Uh. Can I say this correctly?
Well, I I was speaking with Jeff as well. It would be better to have him weigh in.
I know, okay.
My my understanding is that there there can be some enforcement action that can be taken at this point, which would be independent of the board. As a separate item, we could also address some some code issues that would help to improve the solid waste section of our legislation. That could be at our upcoming meeting or some other time, but I think independently Steve can proceed.
Yeah, and I think I think the other thing that Jeff was concerned about was that the nature of the violation wouldn't rise to the review by, you know, the the town court.
Yes, yes.
So, you know, we're looking for another mechanism, and that's why we're we're sort of called into action potentially for this. And just even while we're on the topic of sort of refuse and disposal, I want us to revisit, and I want to run this by you guys anyway, and bring it back maybe on another agenda, setting up a refuse district here. I spoke again with Bill Smith about it, you know, the town has set up a couple. Well, it's really catching on in the town, and so, you know, neighborhoods are forming little districts and all that. And we're probably big enough to just, as a, we're small enough, I should say, as a village to be a district, you know. And they use a different company, and they've had great success. And also, it has dropped many of the monthly rates for homeowners by almost half. So that's kind of a good thing because it's a blanket contract with one contractor, and it's aggressive bidding.
Okay.
Yeah, you know. So they're sending me the the information and the legislation. I don't know. What do you guys think?
I I think it's a good idea. I've I've spoken with residents who have concerns about refusers, aside from the most recent issues that we've heard. And I I think that that's that's definitely worth pursuing. I'd like to look at the draft legislation.
Does the code enforcement officer need to have a direction from the board in order to act? Or is he able to act on his own? Zach gave him the authority.
Zach gave him the permission to act because of the.
It's not necessarily a board action.
No, but it could come back to our board depending on the action that's taken. That's that's the thing, Seth, going to the town. That's my right, that was my understanding.
Last time I said it's wrong.
Okay, okay.
So will, do you, either of you since you initiated, have any questions regarding what the board's discussing?
That's what do with my three-minute timeframe.
Oh.
I don't agree with the fact that violation by one owner's dumpster affects the ability to collect trash in the town. Because in reading 173.6, the the haulers have to be licensed to operate in the village. But that same code section also requires an owner to pay a permanent fee to place a dumpster on this property, which is completely separate from village-wide trash pickup. And this owner and this trash company obviously have no respect whatsoever for our code, for our code enforcement officer. Because every time we have followed trustee Keating's advice and contacted the code enforcement officer, we've been told, there's nothing I can do. There's nothing Charlie can do. Well, I'm telling you what, you take a dumpster full of bottles, put it 20 feet near and dump it in a steel bucket four or five times a year, and your code has a serious flaw. As I read it again tonight, the most recent version, and it says, the owner of the property to place a dumpster has to pay a separate fee. It's completely outside of that company's ability to collect trash in the village.
Okay, well, you know, we'll we'll circle back on that. Thank you very much, really. And also, I mean, I think you're you're hearing that we're looking at another mechanism for for writing in addition.
The immediate answer is, I can't do anything. Sorry, stop it up, basically.
Well, you hear the sport is ready to take action.
And if I still got a half a minute left.
Sure, of course not.
I'm still waiting for an answer on the commercial business that's being run across the street from my house. I think it's 65 State Street. Because that's now added a pod to the driveway that seems to be permanent storage for the Frog's House.
Oh, is that, there's a pod there? I don't know. I honestly don't know.
It's been there for two months.
I honestly don't know.
They regularly hold activities. I'm told there's a special permit for those activities. I have never been notified of a special permit being granted for.
No.
Throat pond activities. It got parking all over the street. It got music. And I'm told it's a not-for-profit, so it doesn't matter. It's a commercial business that's being run in a residential neighborhood.
Well, they're a 501(c)(3) because remember, they they sent in that form to us to show us that.
It's still a commercial business.
Like, okay.
St. Jude's Hospital is not-for-profit, and that's certainly a commercial. The nature of the business doesn't matter. It's a commercial business being run.
Okay, so we'll chase this down again. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I've sent communication, and I didn't get an answer.
You need to talk to Jeff. Okay, yeah.
Can I just jump into the issue?
Sure.
The collection the board collects from the homeowners for the dumpsters, they wait and stop doing that at the request of the building inspector, I want to say, two years ago. I think it was during COVID. I believe we stopped that.
And was that permanently stopped, or was it ceased because of COVID?
I believe it was permanently stopped.
I don't know. Do you guys remember that?
I don't. Let's, we can we can forward the minutes from that meeting perhaps afterwards.
I'll have to hunt, but I I remember that actually happened because that affected revenue coming in. The fraud wasn't a special permit. It was a non-municipal use.
That's right, non-municipal.
So there is no.
Individual, each person.
That's why I was.
Well, you know, that's fine.
Any, any non, all encompassing, they would have to come in each time for a new non-municipal. And so I think that all of these issues that have arisen since the events have taken place, the board needs to consider that, just as we do with each. We've asked about candlelight night, were there any issues, were there any issues with the with the crew event? And we would ask the same questions with this. And if there are issues, then the board would have to consider that in reissuing any new non-municipal.
If you no longer collect the dumpster fees, then it should really revise the code.
Right.
I just printed it out, left it in the whole room.
No, and it's been there, and it was there in the action season. I want to say it was during COVID that we stopped this.
Well, let's take a look at that then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You know, John, 160.
Thank you. Yeah, Art, did you hear?
70 State Street. So thank you for the opportunity. First, working backwards, I think it's a great idea. This did impact coming in with the seventh district, if you will, for records. And especially with the competitive bid and the results, that's manageable decrease, approximately 50%. I think the sooner the better, action literally is today starts a priority for the board, number one. It's not for the entire community.
We have to enact a legislation. It's it's setting up the district.
What I'm saying, initiating tonight is like, put it as a priority.
Oh, yeah, it's going on.
Assume that as a priority day one, since it makes all the sense in the world. It's purely for the benefit of the community of ours. It doesn't harm any businesses. It's a competitive thing. So I think, number one, that's it. Working back, that I think maybe as far as can you do immediately, maybe there's a couple things on my mind, just off the top of my head. Could you not withdraw the permit today and then say, well, issue another permit tomorrow. However, you cannot just want to pick up at these properties, sort of thing. It's just throwing it out there. So that's like a two-day turnaround directly, just throwing that out. I don't see why, because it seems to be more administrative than anything else. It's an issue to the permit. It's a withdrawal because of a violation here. Call me tomorrow if you want to renegotiate, if you will, when I quote that permit, and then we're back on board. And my understanding, there's other people in the community, I don't stress from this board, that issues. Now, if there's similar cases, maybe bring those people in as a continuous commercial properties. I put that out there. Thirdly, in this matter, the frustration lies on the, we all know, thanks for the opportunity to speak it here tonight, is that it's been multiple months, multiple years. I respect a code enforcement officer for his job and responsibilities. Our frustration is that calls and requests to a property owner, who in turn requested from the vendor or directly from the building inspector, code enforcement to the vendor, it gets us nowhere. So the community, the residents, at the, you know, the mercy of this vendor and owner keeps having to be subjected to it, not to mention, building inspectors bother by it constantly. So if it boggles my mind, strike that from the letter. It's more of, the frustration is, there is a code, there's a nuisance word in the code. There's a restriction in hours. We go, why in the world the owner, vendor cannot accommodate this? It's it's a direct violation and nothing's been done specifically, not the calls or requests. We respect all, right? But nothing relative to code enforcement has been done, right? That's it. And I respect Steve's comment about working with people. That's great, but that's like working with your adolescent high school kid that has to do his homework. You want to work with them, but at some point you say, look, you got to get it done, you're out of here, you know, sort of thing. Last but not least is, I don't understand why dumpsters are committed on the RGE property. Parking is on the RGE property that utilize of the customers and, you know, patrons of all, you know, if they're gone. I have no objection of it. My point is, it's been happening for years with no negative ramifications. My point is it's been happening for years with no negative ramifications, no pushback from RGE. Why that commercial dumpster cannot be pushed back into somewhere along the RGE, right?
Wasn't there, wasn't it being looked at behind Pittsburgh lumber at one point?
There was. I mean, there are, I sent a photograph showing where it could go. But my understanding, and I think Justin, you had advised, you did your research, the property line, it's not as far out into the gray area as we know. I respect that, but the point is, there's two points here, that dumpsters have been there for years along that part, towards the other, the Flod of the Woodville as an example, number one. Number two, parking has been there for years, right? I don't know if they have a license or not, or agree with what I need to, but the fact is it's happened. Thirdly, John had mentioned, we had made, he had made, and I didn't directly, but he had asked in 404, a approved site plan signed by the town, recognizing that all improvements have been made for the town, or excuse me, village requirements along the way. No document has been produced to date. So with all due respect, certainly Dorothy knows this, this is not directed at her or to anybody contributing to the board. It's just a simple fact that if there is an approved site plan, formally approved by the village with town signatures, all records of town signatures, where is it? Because we don't think it's there. And whether or not it was approved by the property owner before, it was certainly misplaced there forever approved verbally. But there's no documentation on that, that it's an official approved signed site plan.
Yeah, we need to follow up on that one for sure.
Well, and that's the point, Ms. Mary, is that all of these things have been talked about all through months, years. And then we get accused, that being the residents, by some trustee, I'll leave it at that, that literally that we're, or not, excuse me, representatives, some representatives of the town, I'll leave it at that, no one here, I'll put it that way. It's been said in a public forum that in question why we are so against, that being the residents are against commercial property owners. That is not the case whatsoever. Just like tonight, we're not here, we're against BMEs. It's more, it's on the books, BMEs are not permitted, they're under regulation, whether you call an air review, which is a brand name over BME, it's as regulated already. The fact that it hasn't been enforced is the pet peeve. That enforcement is being neglected for whatever reason. It's not a matter, it's not a gunfight. It's that we're just asking for implementation and compliance and compliance with the code. But we have to do that consistently. We don't like doing it. We look like, you know, you get this sense that, you know, this side of the table, thanks, this side out here is the enemy and confrontational. That is not the case. We're just asking for a fair, balanced, weighted position at the table.
Thank you. No, thank you very much. You're really nice and polite. No, thanks, thanks to both of you. And, you know, I thought, I thought that the workshop was a good discussion and a good starting point for everybody.
And I might say one more thing to that. It's a starting point, but I think too, when you're considering, you may be trying to do this later on some other day. But the thing is, I respect everything about all the business people. But the key points, one, a couple of key points, from what I heard, all nine are owner-occupied, occupied maybe but one.
They're not. Only one is owner-occupied.
Okay, I got the sense, the way they were portraying it, that there's always an owner there, okay? And then if you look at the code...
Well, they live, they live, you know, either in the village or right in...
Okay, okay. My misinterpretation.
That was, no, none of them live in the village. No, not one of them lived in the village.
Well, see, it wasn't portrayed that.
That was some, okay, either way, we'll, we'll, it's getting late. Yeah, it is, it's getting late.
I was going to say, if that was the case, then that's a good thing because they recognize, okay, it should be owner-occupied because of the oversight, the oversight, number one. Number two is that, you know, they say that, don't worry about the future, explains managers, well, it's not included that won't happen. Number three is they try to circle out the monies that they can make and the community can make, but no reference to what any other citizen thought about it, where you have a partial petition of 41 people versus the 91 right out of that gate that are not for it for various reasons. I think they all, no one dismisses the thing about regulation. So I think that's a good point. And that's why I'm not saying don't have it. But it's regulation by specifics as well as locations. And to go back in time, I know that's a challenge, but that's not what we're looking for. So I think with all those points that we consider, we greatly appreciate.
Thank you so much.
It's a hell of a week as well, too.
So thank, thank you for all of it, really. Thank you. It's nice to know people care. Thank you.
That's great.
All right, have a good evening. Any other member items? We're good?
Good.
I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
So...
Okay.
Roll call. Justine Lichten.
Hi.
Justine Lichten.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, thanks. I do want to clarify that so we know. Wait, hang on, she's just going to turn this off. And that is...